All right, we should be started.
Okay.
Think we're waiting on member Puzoli?
Yes, as well as um uh I have new member Ms. Huntley, her computer did a restart. One moment, I'm gonna reach out to her.
Good morning, Member Huntley, welcome.
Have you heard from Board Member Puzoli yet?
No, I texted him, he hasn't responded.
Okay, let's get maybe two more minutes and then we can go ahead and start, Manager.
Very well. Yeah, text it, because I know sometimes there's a login issue there. Oh, he's in the waiting room, let me put him in the. All right, we're good. Good morning, Member Puzoli.
The gang is all home.
Hey, just let me know when you're ready for me to start, we have a quorum, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Ready.
We're ready, okay. Good morning, as Board Chair, I would like to call to order this Agenda Review Workshop of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. The purpose of the workshop is to develop and discuss proposed agenda items which may be presented to the Board for consideration and potential action at its next quarterly meeting on June 3rd, 2025. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I welcome everyone in attendance and I thank my fellow Board members, FLVS CEO and all FLVS staff members who have prepared us for today's workshop. I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome our newest Board Member, Erin Huntley. So, welcome Erin, I don't see you, but she's here, right?
I'm here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, okay, I hear you, all right, thank you so much, we're looking forward to working with you. With that stated, let's proceed with the roll call, Mr. Moore, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Here.
Dr. Tony Arsa.
Here.
Ms. Erin Huntley.
Present.
Dr. Mr. Rob Conerens.
Present.
Mr. Ed Pusoli.
Here.
Ms. Nurse Radcliffe.
Here.
Dr. John Watret. Dr. Watret is not present.
Thank you, next I will open the floor for any opening remarks of the Co-Chair and fellow Board members. Dr. Arsa, do you have any opening remarks?
Yeah, just want to welcome Mrs. Huntley, happy to have another Board Member on, and some of the reappointments of some of our members.
Thank you. Board Member Conerens?
Yeah, welcome, Mrs. Huntley, maybe you can give us a couple words about who you are, what you do, because I didn't get that memo, but I appreciate the preparation and this review meeting helps a lot for the regular board meeting.
Thank you. Board Member Puzoli?
Well, welcome, you know, maybe we should have Rob tell us what he does, I don't know either. But appreciate everybody there, hey, one thing I wanted to mention to everybody is appreciate the leadership and you know, Linda, Linda, I don't know if we can really talk about this, but we may just want to stay the course with the leadership, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Hey, thank you.
About that.
Thank you, Board Member Radcliffe.
Good morning and welcome, Board Member Huntley, we really are excited to have you and looking forward to working with you.
And Board Member Huntley, now you have your chance.
Well, thank you all so much for the kind welcome, we are excited to serve in this way, I am a graduate of Broward County Public Schools and we live in Orlando now, I have three teenagers. So, I am personally well aware of Florida Virtual School and all the amazing offerings. I'm just so thrilled to be a part of this, you know, I have a corporate background in human resource training, but I've been an educational advocate for career and technical education as well as literacy and dyslexia advocacy for a long time. But I'm just really thrilled to be part of something where everyone has amazing things to say about Florida Virtual School. You know, when you get involved in a lot of activities around the state, a lot of people bring you all of the problems and challenges that we have. And upon this appointment, I have been receiving so many compliments about the work you all are doing and the success of the students, and it's just a delight to be a part of this, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to welcome you again, and there was something, oh, so now, actually, what, the way I was thinking about this when I saw your appointment is that you've now made us complete, for the first time, we are a complete board. So, you've done the impossible, so thank you, and we're really looking forward to working with you, all of us.
Thank you.
Now, we will turn to Dr. Algais to lead today's presentation and discussion of proposed agenda items, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Board Chair Ryder, and I'd also like to welcome Mrs. Huntley, it's been a pleasure already getting the opportunity to work with her. And I can tell she's going to bring some great things to strengthen our organization even further together with our existing board, and yeah, we finally have a full, full board, first time in several years, welcome aboard. As always, the goal of today's workshops to review the proposed agenda for the June 3rd, 2025 quarterly board meeting, and I'll take you through our leadership team's proposed agenda items, and of course, as always, happy to answer any questions along the way. And I do have staff members available to go into any detail that anybody might want. So, our first item is going to be the approval of minutes. It'll be requested for the Board of Trustees' March 25th, 2025 quarterly board meeting minutes, and for the minutes of today's workshop meeting, May 6th, 2025, Agenda Review Workshop meeting minutes. Public comments will be the next section, and following the public comments, I'll present the CEO report. The June 3rd CEO Comments Reports presentations will include three agenda items. As usual, Ms. Corey Wheeler, Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will present the quarterly financial report for the period ending March 31st, 2025. And Ms. Beth Brunner, Executive Director of the FLVS Foundation, will share the FLVS Foundation's June 2025 quarterly report with you. And for 4.3, I'll present, as always, our student highlights, which I know is everyone's favorite part of the meeting. Section 5 will be the Proposed Consent Contracts. We currently have seven proposed consent contract agenda items for the Board's consideration and approval. And Mrs. Joanne Sarah, our Senior Director of Procurement and Contracting, will review these agenda items right now, Joanne, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Algais, good morning, Board Members, as Dr. Algais mentioned, I do have seven items to review with you today. Please stop or interrupt me along the way with any questions you may have. The first item is the ACT Education Corporation Master Course License Agreement. We're requesting the Board to approve and authorize the President and CEO to execute a master course license agreement with ACT Education Corp. Florida Virtual School has been licensing online courses in the subject areas of leadership, peer counseling, career research and decision-making and critical thinking from ACT Education Corp. Under a license agreement since 2019, when ACT acquired the courses from Maui Inc. Prior to 2019, we had licensed them from Maui, dating back to 2010. The current agreement is scheduled to expire on June 30th, 2025, and we're requesting the Board's approval to enter into this new agreement for a term of one year with three optional one-year renewals. We pay ACT based upon successful completions in the course, so again, we only pay them based upon a student's successful completion in the course. That rate is $35 in Florida and 45% of gross revenue outside of Florida. We're asking for not to exceed of 1 million per fiscal year, however, we don't anticipate to spend all of that, it's just our not to exceed amount. This includes each optional renewal, each optional renewal, there is no minimum guarantee to ACT. Any questions on that item?
Can you just give us a couple words, like, is why are we outsourcing the licensing and not creating our own curriculum? I guess, if I'm understanding this correctly.
We have actually decreased the number of courses that we're licensing from ACT over the years as we do replace them with our own curriculum, so that's a great question. We've reduced it, we, I don't believe we're currently offering the critical thinking, we've replaced that with our own, as well as a few other courses. So, that is our ultimate plan, so that's a great question. But it's a phase out.
Did I ask if the optional renewals, would they have to come back to the Board each time, or would they be able to be, a decision would be able to be made just by staff?
For optional renewals, we request the approval right in the agenda for those, so that we don't have to bring them back to the Board each and every time. Any other questions before I move on to the next item?
No.
Thank you. The next item was referenced in our last board meeting is our Stop Loss Insurance Policy. This is a part of our benefits package, however, it wasn't at the last meeting because we cannot market this policy until we have a full nine months of claims to report. Our insurance broker Gallagher Benefit Services markets this on our behalf, and we're anticipating the proposals to come in this week. So, I will update that board agenda item with the details of the proposal and the fiscal impact. So, unfortunately, I don't have too many details to go in right now for that item. Any questions on Stop Loss or the purpose? Okay, next item, 5.3, is the Award of our Annual Financial Audit Services, RFP. We're requesting your approval to approve the award. FLVS issued an RFP for these services that was published on March 5th. This is for an independent certified public accounting firm to provide independent auditing services of FLVS annual financial statements as required by statute. We received three proposals in response to this RFP. The committee met on April 15th, 2025 to evaluate the proposals, and they recommend moving forward with the highest ranking responsive bidder for this Mazers LLP. The estimated cost for the initial three-year term of the contract is $185,500, the fiscal year '25 audit, which will take place in the upcoming fiscal year '26, is $60,000, fiscal year '26 is $62,000, and fiscal year '27 is $63,500. Any questions on that item?
Could you tell me a little bit about the rubric that was used and how this forum was done, what was the priority?
Sure, let me, I can pull that up now while we're on the call, or I could be happy to send it to the Board Members after the call.
You can send it out, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, I'm happy to provide that. Any other questions on our annual financial audit RFP award? Okay, the next item, 5.4, is the Workday Optimization RFP Award. We're requesting the Board's approval of the award and authorization of the CEO's execution of the contract for workday optimization. Workday is FLVS's enterprise platform for finance, human resources and planning. The goal of this project is to optimize the FLVS platform to ensure that the organization is utilizing and benefiting as much as possible from the process and workflow efficiencies, automations and integrations that are available. The RFP seeks to engage with a certified workday partner to conduct a comprehensive analysis of the platform and identify and implement recommended improvements and enhancements that enable employees to focus on high-value activities resulting in increased productivity, cost reduction, and enhanced employee satisfaction. The recommended improvements implemented will be in line with the strategic vision and objectives of FLVS. The RFP was posted on March 18th, 2025. Five responses were received by the bid opening deadline of April 17th, 2025. The Evaluation Committee members for each lot scored and ranked the submittals. Based upon the scores, they recommend awarding to Collaborative Solutions LLC, who is determined to be the most advantageous in bringing the best value. The term for the contract is three years with two optional one-year renewal. However, the Phase 1 of the optimization project is anticipated to take approximately 16 weeks. The longer-term contract will allow for any implementations or plans that may be longer-term sweeping under the optimization. This contract is still under negotiation as it was just gone through the process. Phase 1 is estimated at just shy of $380,000. Phase 2 cost is not yet determined, because it will be contingent upon what comes out of Phase 1 of analysis and recommendation. Any questions on that item? Okay, and for all of these, since you asked, I'm happy to provide the evaluation rubric that the committee used for each RFP that we're presenting to you. The next item is the Data Backup and Recovery Services, RFP. Again, this solicitation is in progress. An anticipated awardee will be updated on the board agenda early next week. In fact, the final Evaluation Committee meeting is this week, so this one, I really don't have any information, no potential awary yet. Item 5.6 is the Risk Management General Liability and Workers' Compensation Policy. We're requesting the Board's approval of the Northeast Florida Education Consortium, NIFEC, Risk Management Program Contract. FLVS has been a member of NIFEC since January 202001. NIFEC is a consortium for 13 Florida public school districts located primarily in the northeast area of Florida and serves as administrator for the program. This contract provides workers' compensation, liability, property and other various insurance coverage programs. The fiscal impact is $303,141.21 and 27 cents for fiscal year '26. Any questions on item 5.6? Okay, and the last item is our Increase in Contract Spend Authority. This is my standing agenda item that you see every quarter. My team will monitor usage on our approved contracts, and as we approach year-end, we want to ensure our spend authority is not exceeded. Currently, I don't have any items for this agenda item, if they are, the board will be updated and the agenda item will be updated. If there are no items, then this item will be removed from the agenda. And that is all I have, are there any questions before we close out?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Section 6 will also be for Proposed Consent for the Annual Reports and Forms. We'll present and propose seven reports for approval as consent agenda items. 6.1 is the Florida Virtual School 2526 District K-12 Comprehensive Evidence-Based Reading Plan, which must be submitted annually by June 15th. It supports increasing student achievement and literacy and closing achievement gaps. The reading plan must be approved by the FLVS Board of Trustees for the specific use of the evidence-based reading instruction allocation. And by July 1st, the Florida Department of Education will release the allocations of appropriate funds to each school district pending plan submission. The FLVS K-12 Comprehensive Evidence-Based Plan depicts and details the role of administration, both district and school level, professional development, assessment, curriculum, and instruction in the improvement of student learning of the best English language arts standards. This information is reflected for all schools and grade levels and shared with all stakeholders, including school administrators, leadership teams, literacy coaches, classroom instructors, support staff and parents. Item 6.2 is the 2526 Mental Health Plan. FLVS is eligible to receive its share of the state's mental health assistance allocation for the 2526 school year. The estimated allocation amount is about 3 million. Before receiving payment of such funds, we must submit a proposed 2526 Mental Health Plan, which has been approved by the FLVS Board of Trustees to the FDOE. The Mental Health Assistant Allocation is intended to fund the establishment and expansion of school-based mental health care, train educators and other school staff in detecting and responding to mental health issues, and connect children, youth and families who may experience behavioral health issues with appropriate services. With the fiscal year 2526 allocation and any roll-forward dollars from last year's allocation, the total expenditure to meet these goals during the 2526 is estimated, school year is estimated to be nearly 3.1 million. Item 6.3 is the FLVS Report to the Commissioner of Education on District Franchises for the 2324 school year. The franchise report generally summarizes the performance of each school district operating an FLVS franchise. We're happy to share that our 38 district virtual schools completed 220,205 half-credit enrollments in the 2324 school year. Annual parent and student survey results show positive program satisfaction with FLVS district franchises. Findings show that students and parents were strongly satisfied with the FLVS franchise course experience and teachers. Although the FLVS district franchises provide a robust course choice and access to online learning options to Florida students, stakeholder satisfaction speaks volumes of the quality of our state's virtual learning program. Item 6.4 covers our FLVS Employee Evaluation Instruments. Our employee evaluation instruments are regularly reviewed and updated following applicable state and federal laws and regulations. The Instructional Evaluation Instrument is intended to evaluate instructor and non-classroom instructional performance within the areas of professional and practice, performance of students, and other indicators of performance such as professional growth. The Instructional Evaluation Plan requires approval from both the FDOE and the Board. Required revisions to the FLVS Instructional Evaluation Instrument were submitted to the FDOE in March of 2025. The FDOE may require non-substantive or technical changes to be made to various evaluation plan documents after the Board's approval of the plan and evaluation instruments. These subsequent changes, if any, do not require Board approval. If any substantive provisions, however, are required by the FDOE, then the FLVS leadership team will present the revisions to the Board for approval once again. The Support Staff Evaluation Instrument is not governed by requirements set in state statute, however, to ensure organizational accountability and enterprise focus on the FLVS strategic goals, FLVS uses a Support Staff Evaluation Instrument to evaluate non-instructional personnel. The FLVS Support Staff Evaluation Instrument was reviewed. Resulting revisions are proposed to the categorical weights and core competency definitions, and an updated Support Staff Evaluation will be presented to the Board for approval. Item 6.5 is our FLVS Quarterly Staff Data Report, which summarizes personnel actions over the prior quarter of our fiscal year. It's the same report we bring to the Board every quarter. And 6.6 is also a quarterly, usually, report, disposal of assets. Facilities Department has determined that the assets in the attached spreadsheet qualify for disposal per Florida statute. These assets are fully depreciated following FLVS depreciation schedules, or were expensed at the time of acquisition, they're not capitalized, and they are either unfit for FLVS use or excess items. These items will be disposed of in a manner that best fits the organization's needs, up to and including an open sale, donation to another school district, or otherwise as specified in Florida statutes. The item will be paid to FLVS and accounted for in general fund. 6.7 is currently a placeholder for the 2324 Legislative Report. Florida statute requires the Board to annually submit to the Governor, Legislature, Commissioner of Education and State Board of Education a complete and detailed report setting forth the following for FLVS and FlexPoint. Operations and accomplishments, marketing and operational plan, assets and liabilities, recommendations regarding unit costs of providing services to students, and recommendations regarding mechanisms to assess the effectiveness of services. This agenda item will be updated with the attachment before the June 3rd quarterly board meeting. Section 7, Proposed Discussion will be finance matters, and we'll have three financial items for the Board's proposed discussion agenda. 7.1 is the Fiscal Year 2425 Budget Amendment Number 4 to reconcile the budget that was approved back in September to current budget. 7.2 will cover the Fiscal Year 2526 budget, the upcoming year's budget, and 7.3 is for accounts receivable debt write-off. And Ms. Corey Wheeler will review these items at the June 3rd quarterly board meeting. Section 8, Proposed Discussion will be FLVS Board Policies, First Reading, Policy Revisions and Repeals. We're going to have several, but not as many as usual, because we're coming to the end of the tunnel, the light at the end of the tunnel with all the updates that the Board has approved in Board Policies from the original policies that we had here over decades. We'll request the Board's authorization to publish a text and provide public notice of hearing on these proposed policies, policy revisions and repeals, and Karen Chastain or Deputy General Counsel will review these at the June 3rd quarterly board meeting. Parade 2 will present the Proposed 2526 FLVS Student Code of Conduct for a first reading. All districts are required to adopt a student code of conduct and distribute it to the appropriate stakeholders. 9, Proposed Discussion Board Policies, we have several of those from the prior quarterly meeting, and we're going to put them forward for the Board's hearing and adoption in this agenda item. And Section 10, that will be our organizational meeting that we have every year on the proposed discussion. 10.1 is the Establishment of Board Meeting Dates for Fiscal Year 2526. I'll recommend the establishment of the dates in the attached document for the Agenda Review Workshop and regularly quarterly meetings for the 2526 fiscal year. Keeping in mind that if any of those, as we come to them, need to be changed, the Board can always change them. 10.2 is the Election of Board Chair and Co-Chair. Per Board Bylaws, there will be one Board Member serving as Chair and one Board Member serving as Co-Chair of the Board at all times. Board Bylaws mandate that the Board Chair and Co-Chair are elected by majority vote of the Board's membership during public meeting of the Board. The bylaws also require the election of a Chair and Co-Chair to take place at or prior to the first quarterly regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of the fiscal year. I'll recommend the Board's election of a Chair and Co-Chair whose terms of service shall begin July 1st, 2025, as outlined in Section 2.7 of the Board's bylaws. Section 11, turn the meeting over to Dr. Dagata for any comments or reports you may have from the Office of the General Counsel. And Section 12 will be closing remarks, which don't need an explanation. Thank you for your participation in today's workshops. At the June 3rd quarterly board meeting, agenda will be timely posted for the public. Board Members are welcome to contact me, as always, directly with questions or clarifications of anything that we've discussed today. And I'll now hand it back over to Board Chair Ryder for any closing remarks and to formally adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Algais, Board Members, do you have any additional questions or comments?
On the 3.1 Mental Health Budget, how much of an increase is that? And maybe just brief description of what we're doing there?
Sure thing, let me go back, thank you Bruce for going back to that item. So, we hire several counselors, several threat management folks, mental health-specific counselors, not guidance counselors, with these funds, the funds are about the same. I don't think they've increased much, I mean, they've increased quite a bit from years ago, because we never used to get this allocation until the DOE realized that we do need it. And we do provide a whole lot of services to our students in the mental health realm. Robin, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, thanks, I was actually just trying to find, let me find the numbers, Member Corners, and I'll send them off to you, he's right, it's about the same. The major change here is that we're including personnel that also has to do with threat management, which is typically separately funded, but we haven't received funding for that yet. So, that would be the only addition, I would say, to what Dr. A was describing as what the responsibilities of mental health counselors, and the threat, now we have the threat management specialists that will be added into the budget. But I'll get you the comparison between last year and this year, I'll try to do it before this meeting is over.
And for clarification, the threat management is whenever a student is referred to us that has perhaps some sort of issues, we have a team that reads and goes over all of the data to determine what level of threat the student might possess to themselves or others, and then we make sure that we have the correct personnel in place to work with them. And then we make sure that we have the correct personnel in place to work with them.
Robin, I have a, I'm sorry, Rob, go ahead.
No, I was just curious, is that something that, I mean, have we had any threats? Or how many threat cases do we get a year? And is it growing? And then is any of this for like suicide prevention or anything like that?
What it means?
Yes, there is counseling for suicide prevention. We have a handful of cases a year. We do get referred to us from other school districts, cases where they need to move them from their school districts or whatever, and we review those cases and then determine if this is an appropriate placement for those students. So we do have some students here who have been removed from their school districts, and we're helping them to get through their school year and providing counseling as well.
Are these, are these students?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, no, go, yeah, are these students self-referred? I mean, are they seeking help themselves, or are they identified by the, you know, their professors as, you know, potential risks?
Yeah, both of those things. Sometimes they refer themselves. Sometimes the staff recognizes there's a need and refer them. Actually, part of the funding goes for training of staff so that they can identify when they see that their student perhaps needs some assistance.
And parents can also make a
Absolutely.
So I know all this is done virtually, right? But like, let's say somebody lives in Ocala, and there's an issue. Are there people that you can refer them to if they need to see people in person, or?
Yep, that is also part of what we do. We have resources that we've identified throughout the state. Remember, we are statewide organization, so we have to keep tabs on the districts to see where they might have some, perhaps in person-to-person in face counseling. And we refer the parents to those.
Right. This obligation comes out of Marjorie Stone's Duckless Act, and then it's merged with the emphasis on mental health awareness. And so we're actually required to make threat assessments on students' behavior and whatnot. And the issue for us is both to be able to train and identify the potential threats and also to assess the level of threat, which is equally as difficult. Because you certainly don't want to tag a student a higher threat than he or she really is. But you want to get them help for their sake and others around them. So that's a difficulty with this, with the challenge.
So it looks like if our enrollments stay the same, remember Cornarans, it looks to be about a $30,000 increase over last year. But the budget is not completely finalized yet.
Okay. Did we use the whole budget last year?
The budget's not going to be finalized for another couple of weeks, it looks like, so.
Yep.
Did we use the whole budget last year? Just out of curiosity, yeah?
Not completely, but they do allow us to roll forward. It's not used from the prior year into the upcoming year.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? All right, having reviewed the proposed agenda for our June 3rd, 2025 Quarterly Meeting, we will now proceed with closing remarks and adjournment. First, I will turn to my fellow board members for any remarks. Dr. Arza?
Thank you for a great meeting, and I want to congratulate Ms. Huntley for a great first meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Cornarans?
That is great, short, sweet, to the point, I like it.
Thank you. Board Member Pizzoli?
No, thank you. Thank you to the team for preparing us. And we really do appreciate the effort, and welcome to the new board members. And the one thing I want to warn you of is the length and lack of brevity on the legal report. It's important that you be prepared for that. Is Dagata still on? So I want to make sure that he knows I'm saying this to him.
I'm saving my word count.
Okay, good. All right. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to warn all the board members that it's important that you bring a pillow before the report.
And he gets to roll over his words for the next meeting if he doesn't.
A pillow and a crying child.
I know we're not supposed to take business, but I limit the number of words on the legal report, just, you know, maybe three, three words.
I don't think we can do that. Possible. Okay, so Board Member Radcliffe?
I just want to thank everyone, all the staff, for the preparation of the agenda and everything for the upcoming meeting. So thank you. And welcome again, Board Member Huntley, and have a great week, everyone.
Thank you. Board Member Huntley? We scared her away.
She's there, but for some reason, her sound's not working.
Oh.
It was the dreaded legal report.
I think so. You scared her. All right, well, if you can get on, interrupt me. I don't mind. So just interrupt me if you can get on. But we want to thank you again for being here and for the appointment. I also want to make a note that this is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I want to thank, I'm sure the whole board would like to thank all our wonderful teachers and how much we appreciate what they do for their students and for the organization. So I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you all for putting this together for us again. It was amazing. And Dr. Algais, do you have any closing remarks?
As always, I want to thank you. And Mrs. Huntley, as you can see from your co-board members here, spectacular group. You're going to have a great time working with them. They are caring. They have their heads in the right place, and they are all looking for the exact same thing as we are, which is whatever we can do to benefit our students. So welcome aboard, and as always, thank you, board members, for everything you do for our organization.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Does the General Counsel have any closing remarks?
How much time do you have? How much time do you have? Now, I'm going to reserve the remainder of my time for the June 3rd meeting. I plan to be very robust at that meeting. But I wanted to also welcome Board Member Huntley. She's even quieter than I am during this board meeting. We really have. We've been waiting four years to round off the full board. And now we have seven members. We're just very grateful to the governor and to the leadership in Tallahassee.
Yep, thank you. I agree. All right, this concludes today's Agenda Review Workshop meeting. Is there a motion to dismiss, to adjourn? I'm sorry, to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and David, we appreciate your brevity today. Thank you.
I'll second.
You're seconding the appreciation of David's brevity?
Exactly.
All in favor, hurry up before. Yeah.
I.
All opposed, motion carries. I once again thank everyone who attended and prepared us for today's meeting. I look forward to seeing you all on June 3rd. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody.